Good evening and welcome to the October 24th, 2017 School Committee Meeting. We're happy to have you join us. Tonight's meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. East Hampton Media, Channels 191, 192, and 193 is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. Before we go on to announcements, I have an announcement that I would like to make. There was an article in Mass Live a couple of days ago where I feel as though I was misquoted or misrepresented in that article, and I would just like to clarify that, especially because it was the second time that it appeared in an article. So I would just like to clarify, in that article, it was stated that I commented there was no new information from the AG's report. The AG's report revealed no new information when compared with an internal review of school culture conducted by Follansby and her consultants in the Northampton-based Collaborative for Educational Services. That is not what I said. What I did say was, "There was no new information when compared with the internal review, the report from the Collaborative, and the memorandum of agreement with the AG's office." And that's a very key piece of that statement, a very key piece of information that was missing from that statement, from that message. So I just wanted to clarify that, especially because it's the second time that it appeared in the press, that that is what I said. So, the other thing I'd like to clarify is, in the most recent Mass Live article, there was a comment made about NEASK accreditation, and there was some sort of comment to the fact that we were striving for NEASK accreditation. And I'd just like to clarify that, in fact, we are accredited. East Hampton High School is accredited by the National Education Association of Schools and Colleges, and that we are renewing that process, we're going through the process of renewal. So I just would like that to be clarified as well.
Right. The NEASK accreditation process is something that all schools go through on either a five- or ten-year basis, and we've completed this before. So this is a normal and routine procedure. It's very helpful to the district because it's an opportunity for self-reflection, and there are suggestions that come from the visiting committee that provides feedback, but it's a routine part of wise professional development for both public and independent schools throughout the Commonwealth.
Yes, thank you. So I just wanted to make sure we're all clear on that. All right, moving on, do we have some gifts?
Oh, we do.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, right. Sorry, yeah. There's more announcements.
Superintendent Follansby, I did that.
You did that one?
Yeah. Superintendent Follansby, your announcements.
I do have some announcements. The next regular school committee meetings are November 14th and December 12th, 2017. There is no school on Tuesday, November 7th, due to city elections and teacher professional development. There is no school Friday, November 10th, due to Veterans Day observance. There is no school Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, November 22nd, 23rd, and 24th, due to Thanksgiving break. There is a half-day of school on Monday, December 11th, due to Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school December 25th through January 2nd, due to winter break. Classes will resume on Tuesday, January 2nd, 2018. The swearing-in ceremony for all elected officials, mayor, city council members, and school committee members will be Tuesday, January 20th, January 2nd, rather, 2018, at noon, here at 50 Payson Avenue, second floor, meeting area. For community members or others who do not have children in our schools and want to receive the superintendent updates, please visit our website at www.epsd.us and click on "Click to Subscribe" under "Latest Superintendent Update."
Thank you very much. Okay, back to gifts.
Right, so we have no correspondence. Before we get to the gift, I just want to highlight in that announcement for everyone who's here and for the benefit of everyone in the city who's interested in participating that we hold citywide elections for the school committee, the city council, the mayor's office. All of those positions are up under our current charter, and I encourage everyone who's interested in shaping the direction that East Hampton is going to participate by getting engaged in the campaigns and promoting the candidates that you think will do the best job for the city, and then remembering to do your civic duty and get out and vote. It makes a difference, so please do so. In terms of gifts, we have, and I would ask the committee to vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation, an anonymous $20 cash donation to be used towards something needed in the school department.
Do you have a motion? Seconded?
Seconded.
Motion to accept this $20 anonymous donation. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passed. And thank you very, very much. Okay, this brings us to the public speak portion of our meeting. If anyone here would like to address the school committee, we'd ask you to come forward at this time. Tell us who you are and where you're from, and you're welcome to do so.
Hi, my name's Alice Wannamaker. I'm a lifelong East Hampton resident and a current freshman at East Hampton High School. During the 2015 to 2016 school year and the summer of 2016, I worked with the school committee and the Whitebrook administration to make necessary changes to the Whitebrook dress code. I started this process because I knew that many Whitebrook students thought the dress code was unfair. During this process, I collected data on opinions of the dress code within Whitebrook, and my two key findings at that time were, one, there was widespread perception of bias within the dress code, most students thought it was unfair, and two, enforcement of the dress code was subjective and unreliable. It was not uniformly enforced, and some groups of students were dress coded much more often than others. As I continued my research, I found that some aspects of the Whitebrook dress code were not in compliance with Massachusetts law. Once the school committee became involved in this process, they shared my concern about compliance with the law. They also raised continuity between schools as an important objective for a new dress code proposal. School committee is currently reviewing many policies and handbooks district-wide, including the EHS dress code. Updates on policies concerning violent or discriminatory images on clothing at EHS have already been created. As a student, I am excited to see those policies shifting to reflect EHS values more, and I think that the people who created them did a wonderful job. As this work is being done, I urge the school committee to keep in mind the work that has been done in previous years and the goals for new dress codes that were identified during that time. Before I share my concerns about the EHS dress code, I'd like to restate the legal framework I used to audit the Whitebrook dress code. These are the potential legal justifications for a dress code rule, as I came to understand them after a year of research. An item can be banned if it causes disruption or disorder within the school. An item can be banned if it violates reasonable standards of health, safety, and cleanliness. As I understand it, those are the only legal justifications that allow schools to abridge students' rights to freedom of expression via dress. There are two rules in the EHS dress code which, according to our previous framework, are problematic. Attire covering the top of the body and torso, and strapless tops or shirts are prohibited. To my knowledge, they have not yet been selected for review. I would encourage you to make sure that these rules are considered during this period of review. Here are my concerns about these rules using the framework we created when updating the Whitebrook dress code. In my review of the Whitebrook dress code, I made the argument that any rule that can be found to affect a certain gender of student more than another could be classified as discriminatory and therefore not in compliance with Massachusetts law. I believe these rules both fit into that category. After examining the clothing offerings at five popular department stores for teens, I was unable to find any clothing in the men's section that would be censored by these rules. There were many options in the women's section that would be censored by these rules. For example, an average of 38% of the tops available at these stores qualified as torso-exposing. I'm concerned the EHS may not have legal justifications to enforce these rules if they do not have an argument that these items are unsafe, unhealthy, or unclean, or they do not have evidence that these items cause disruption or disorder within the school. These rules also fail to create continuity between the schools, which was identified as an important objective during the review of the Whitebrook dress code. EHS is currently the only school at which strapless clothing is banned. There is a rule similar to the EHS torso-exposing one at Whitebrook, but it is worded differently. As the school committee works to improve its dress code policies, I urge it to remember the research and frameworks that were used in the updates of the Whitebrook dress code, and I would love to be a part of that process in any way that I can be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Alice. We appreciate all your efforts and what you've shared with the committee. Anyone else?
Sure.
If you could tell us your name and where you're from.
Wes Hardy. I live at 154 Hendrick Street. I was reviewing the rules, and I just kind of wrote this quickly when I got back from work today, so enjoy. "The law comforts the afflicted and allows the comfortable to be afflicted. It's the most unifying and equalizing force. When passions strain, it's unwise to tempt fate by breaking this bond. Even as ill-defined and ambiguous as they are, you may like having restrictions on hate speech. You may think there's no cause for alarm. You may wish hate speech was or is against the law." Sorry, I was running. "In your pursuit of community inequality, you may think censorship not too high a price to pay. You may write me off or ignore me today, because today these policies can help you achieve your goals. But tomorrow's coming, and tomorrow will be different. Tomorrow, people who don't think like you will hold your positions of power, and you'll cry out for the law. But your opinion, your clothing, your writing, your flag, music, or speech will be hate speech. So be very careful what you do today, because tomorrow's coming." Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this will end the public speak portion of our meeting, and we'll move on to our subcommittee reports. Finance Subcommittee.
The Finance Subcommittee just met, and we reviewed some proposed budget transfers, and the recommendation was that those will be given to the school committee at our next meeting on November 14th.
Okay, thank you very much. And Policy Review Subcommittee.
We met last week, and we continue to working on the guidelines for supporting transgender and non-binary students. Sarah Hunter provided us with an update. She's been in contact with the students and advisor in the GSA at the high school. And so our next step is to invite some students from the GSA to join us at a policy subcommittee meeting to hear their perspectives, and I think that they're working on developing a written statement or some kind of guideline.
That was my understanding, yeah.
Great. So we're looking forward to hearing from the students. And then we also did our final look at the MOU with the police department, which the full committee has received and will discuss later today.
Very good.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
Sorry.
Collaborative for Educational Services update.
Our next meeting will be November 15th, so I'll have an update after that.
Which brings us to our Student Representative update. Karen Patterson with us. Carrie, do you have some information to share?
Yeah, there's some events going on at the high school right now. We're actually in the last day of our French exchange program. There were 15 students, I believe, that came from Brittany, France, and were hosted by 15 EHS students. I was able to host one student, and like, we've had a great time, and I believe everybody else has had a great time. So that, they go to Boston tomorrow, and then they leave. But yeah, so that's happening. Homecoming was just scheduled for November 9th, which is a Tuesday, but we don't have school on that Friday, so it's like a Friday. And yeah, I think that's basically the updates.
And Carrie, we have four of our students from the high school going to their village in Château Lausanne. Is that correct?
Yeah. The numbers are still like being decided. If we don't have a certain amount of students, we won't be able to go on the trip. So hopefully we get eight students, so yeah.
Let's hope so. We did send students two years ago, and they had a wonderful experience, and Monsieur Benoit would send email messages back to us, I think they were at least weekly and sometimes more often, about what was going on in France, and that was a good experience for all of us.
We lived through those pictures.
Yes, right. Photos and emails.
How many went last time?
Six, I believe. I think the company he went through was a bit lenient last time, but I believe we need eight to go this time, so.
Are you currently listed as one of the four?
Uh, yes. So that's in April of 2018, so it's a 14-day trip, four days in Paris and then 10 days in Château Lausanne.
And as Mr. Benoit stated, it's not just going to visit somewhere as a tourist. You are living part of it. You're with a family, you're in the school system, you live every part of it, so it's a very different experience.
Yeah. Oh, and there's another trip going on to Greece, also in April of 2018, so that's in the process as well.
Oh, that's cool. And there's a craft fair, fundraiser, to support that effort on Saturday.
This Saturday, right?
This Saturday, at the East Hampton High School Auditorium. I believe it starts at 8:30 in the morning until 3:30 in the afternoon. It's free admission. Be there or be square.
One more thing. We have a fundraiser on Friday. It's mostly for the EHS school community, but it's like a Halloween fundraiser where people can donate a dollar and dress up for Halloween, and all the proceeds are going to the Puerto Rico Relief.
Nice. There's a similar fundraiser at Center and Peppin Schools, where they get to wear a crazy hat and bring a dollar, and I believe that was also for Hurricane relief.
Right. And that's on Friday also, right? The Crazy Hat Day?
Sounds good, yeah. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, moving on to our education policy update. Marissa, do you have any information for us?
Sure. So we all received an email about with the schedule for the charter school authorizing activities that will be going to the DESI board this year, and we also received a letter that the AMR school committee had put together and passed. To remind ourselves of the background here, in last January, the DESI board rejected a request that the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School nearly double its enrollment by adding 452 seats. The reason for that rejection was that the charter school was not enrolling populations that were comparable to the sending districts in the region. Specifically, the sending districts serve 13.4% special education students versus 5.9 at the Pioneer Valley Chinese Immersion School, 39.9% low-income student versus 15.5, 6% ELL versus 2.5, as well as substantially fewer Black students and Hispanic students proportionally. Additionally, they also were seeing high rates of attrition of students with disabilities coming from that school who weren't able to receive services there and then who needed to return to their home districts. So the suggestion was that the charter school should make some programmatic changes to address those disparities between their population and the wider population, but since that hasn't happened, they have just renewed the request again this year. So if we're interested in putting together a letter of support for delaying that doubling of the enrollment, they're seeking public comment, it looks like by the earliest, but we should probably aim for the beginning of November. I know Peter took the trip out to Boston last year to actually go to the hearing and said it was very helpful to have a representative there. I'm not sure that the date for the hearing is scheduled, but I'll keep an eye on that as well.
Once it is scheduled, I do think that it's beneficial for someone to go and to speak. You can sign up for slots and even coordinate with other groups that are there that are speaking so that you use the time wisely, and rather than reiterating points, try to expand on what is being presented as a cause for concern. My sense from the meeting last year, and I think we saw this in the attention that was paid to a local elementary school this summer with a very late notification about students that were operating under charter and choice, and the devastating impact that it threatened to impose on that school that ranked the highest in the state in elementary school reading. So the canard that is put out there that somehow the students who opt for charter schools are students who are at risk somehow, it just doesn't stand up to the reality of the student population that's there. The reality of the student population that is being served is overwhelmingly not at risk and overwhelmingly unreflective of the sending districts, and you know, it's almost like having a conversation in a parallel universe, but I think that it is persuasive to be there in person, the people on the board, pay attention to all the emails that they get, but as we know, as Alice just demonstrated and Wes just demonstrated, by speaking here, those who choose to attend get to make that point clear with, you know, just their presence in the room. I continue to believe that charter schools are the single biggest financial challenge threatening public education in the United States. I think that there's just no greater threat to the healthy funding of public education. And to repeat, I hope for the last time, the terrible old joke, you know, if you don't want to talk about the financial side of charter schooling, it's a bit like asking Mrs. Lincoln, "Other than that, what'd you think of the play?" You know, money matters, and the fact that they don't want to address that piece of it is another unfortunate component of the discussion around charter schools. Once a date is settled, I would be willing to go again if I can work it into my schedule. And I think you'll find that the folks on the AMRST and Pellon school committees and school officials there are great to collaborate with. They were incredibly persuasive last year. So I urge the committee to have at least one person, not only should we issue a recommendation and support of what has already been put forward, which is to keep the Chinese Immersion School at the size that it's currently at, but also to go and just physically be in the room and make the points clear. There's often an opportunity to answer questions and to clarify things that are written as well. So for all those reasons, I urge just to speak loudly, clearly, and in person if possible.
And I would just like to add that at our collaborative meeting, the steering committee for the Collaborative in Northampton is composed of superintendents of the collaborative districts, and the district in Northampton and the district of Hadley also are sending letters and perhaps school committee representatives to that meeting. So there seems to be a nice collaborative process here in terms of addressing this issue. And Peter was very effective in being there at the last hearing.
What was our process last time? We wrote, I know we sent Peter, or Peter sent himself.
We had a letter that was already...
We had a letter that we wrote, too. Yeah, so...
I wanted to suggest that we have a work session.
That's what I was wondering.
To create a letter, create a plan.
Yeah, because I mean, it seemed to help last time, so you know.
Well, Peter, you were saying that it really mattered, the public presence there, even though we all had, you know, like a written opinion, that it almost turned the corner. You were actually surprised a little bit with the outcome by having the public presence.
I think if I remember the details, there were a series of charter-related proposals on the agenda that evening, and I think all of them either passed or were postponed with a favorable recommendation. I think that the public testimony in support of the written testimony highlighted the... You know, I mean, one of the difficult things here is that I have no doubt that everyone at the Chinese Immersion School is interested in promoting excellent education, and I hate the fact that the system's been designed in a way that people who should be allies become antagonists, but the system has been designed that way, and we also need to continue to appeal to the representatives in the general court to address the way charter and choice function in the Commonwealth. But I think you could still be respectful, I think you could be civil. I think the conversation is unusual, in contrast with the political season that we were going through then and that has continued to this day. I think a lot of, you know, good points were made that were based with evidence and a lot of empathy, but I do think that just, you know, being there makes a difference. And arriving, you know, as we heard from the one member of the DESI board who is nearest to us geographically, you know, the very specific things that matter in his assessment of whether or not a charter school should be allowed to be created or expanded, and I think we would be wise to heed his advice about looking specifically at the evidence related. That's why I bring up the Pellon situation, because, you know, third-grade reading scores matter.
His big thing was third-grade reading scores.
And they have the best third-grade reading scores in the Commonwealth. So if you're, what else can you do as a public school to maintain the integrity of your, you know, your financial structure? You know, if people want to leave the system entirely, that's fine, but leaving an excellent school system and saying, "I'm going to take my ball and go play somewhere else," has an impact on the other people who are left behind, and that, you cannot ignore that reality when you're making this decision.
Okay. So we'll schedule a work session next one?
Yeah.
Okay. We'll be attached to coordinate.
Peter, what's the date of that hearing?
We're still, they're still finalizing it. They've said early December.
December.
I think, is that when they'll meet? Okay.
When I read through the documents, it was a little bit unclear, but I think we'd be wise to take advantage of it.
And they follow like the same format we do, right? Like with the public speak, you know, open meetings, it has to be posted, kind of all that stuff, so.
And they do have a system, and I don't recall it, I mean, there were four of us in addition to the representatives from the Chinese Immersion School who spoke, there were two people there, and then there were four of us who also spoke. I do think they cap it because they're trying to work within a certain timeframe, and they give you a certain number of minutes to speak, but I think representatives from the sending districts, it would be extraordinarily unwise for DESI to say no to letting any representative from a sending district. You know, we might see how the election unfolds, and perhaps a new member of the school committee would like to join in that endeavor as well. I think it would be terrific.
Okay.
Sorry.
Thank you. Moving on, Superintendent Follansby.
So I have a number of things in my update this evening, and the first being the student handbook updates. In your packet, we included the elementary student handbook, and the middle school handbook, and the high school handbook. There are very few changes in the elementary handbook and the middle school handbook, so I would just ask that if you have any questions about the changes in either the elementary handbook or the middle school handbook, that our principal representative for the elementary school, Principal Rabello is here, she'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. And Principal Belice is also here, yes? And she'd be happy to answer any questions about the middle school handbook. And then I'm going to ask Assistant Principal Welson, you're the one who's going to do the presentation on the high school handbook, because there are a number of changes, and Principal Welson's worked with a number of members of the East Hampton High School community in making these changes. So let's start with the elementary handbook, and do school committee members have any questions for Principal Rabello?
No.
And the handbook, I'm sorry, excuse me for interrupting. The handbook is the same for Maple Center and Peppin. It's a uniform handbook.
Does anyone have anything else to say? Oh, go ahead, Peter.
Well, first I want to thank you for having a summary included that tells us where to find the changes that are the most significant. I think this is a complimentary concern to the ones that are speakers tonight in public speak identified, and one that I've talked about before. Because of the unfortunate misunderstanding by a number of adults in the community, so it's reasonable to assume that some students would, the disruption that creates disorder standard that's part of the dress code needs to be understood in a way that does not promote the heckler's veto. Somebody who doesn't like something that somebody is wearing can't get up to throw a rock through a window and say, "Therefore, the person has to take it off," or change out of that. That's not what the standard is, and I think that we'll continue as long as this matter resonates in the community to have to educate folks about a very difficult standard to implement in schools, something that, you know, interferes. I don't think anyone has any doubt that a student who stands up in the middle of, you know, an arithmetic exercise and starts quoting from the Declaration of Independence, as worthy as that would be, it's creating disorder, and if the way they're dressed accomplishes the same thing, then clearly you could ask them to change out of what they're dressed, but that we should err on the side of caution when it comes to how we assess things that substantially interfere with the educational process. And I think that language is repeated in other dress code provisions in the other handbooks. And I think that language is repeated in other dress code provisions in the other handbooks.
And this was the language that was recommended by our school department attorney, Russell DePerey.
Yeah. And I think that the legal framework is there. Remember too, and I, you know, I'm sorry, I think Alice departed, but I think that's what schools can do and what schools should do aren't necessarily always the same thing. Just because the Supreme Court gives the school, because I would argue that the, my understanding is that the courts have given schools greater latitude than Alice identifies here. That said, just because the courts say we can do it, doesn't mean that we have to. And I think we would be wise to think about what Alice and, you know, Wes Hardy have said tonight, as well as our own recent experience, and just treating this as part of the educational process. I think if you talk with students, if you talk to a student who's wearing something that might provoke concern among others, I think in the overwhelming majority of circumstances, you're going to reach a consensus that produces a better community atmosphere going forward. And I worry about creating a power to address those rare moments when education and conversation don't accomplish the mission in the educational context.
I think the part that stands out to me is not the disrupt and disorder part, but the part that says substantially interferes with the educational process or with another student's ability to receive an education. Because there is a lot of, like, actual evidence, like, there's been a lot of sociological research done about the ability of students from marginalized communities to receive an effective education in a setting where people are wearing clothing or demonstrating symbols that suggest that they are less than human or shouldn't be there or don't have a right to be there. So I think that, I mean, the way that I was reading that, you know, there is actual, like, evidence, there's actual research that's been done about that, whereas there hasn't been research done about, like, the ability of, you know, the example I'm going to give is, like, straight students to learn in an environment where somebody's wearing a rainbow flag. Like, nobody's ever shown that they can't do that. So I feel a little bit more, I think when we received the original dress code kind of wording at the beginning of the school year, I kind of felt like that second piece was missing, the piece about the ability of students to receive an effective education, or receive an education, I don't know why I keep putting it effective. And then the other part that stands out to me is that school administrators will make the final decision about the implementation of the dress code. And of course, if somebody has a problem with a decision that a school administrator makes, there is a process by which they can appeal that decision, which is, you know, going to the administrator, going to the next administrator, and then eventually getting to us if their issue hasn't been resolved by then. So I kind of feel like we already have the process, or we already have the other parts that are built in to kind of, I'm not as worried about what Peter is worried about. And I was concerned about that before, because I've seen, like, there's been a lot of, there's been some situations where, like, a student wearing a Black Lives Matter shirt was told that they were creating a disruption and they couldn't wear that in school. I feel like the additional language makes me less concerned about that kind of thing happening. But yeah, it is definitely something that I've been uneasy about.
Yeah, I agree. I like that last line about the school administrators, because it is, these things have to be applied in context. And symbols that might be innocuous to one group of students might be really sensitive given an event that's occurred or given a culture that exists within that community. And so we want our administrators to be applying the policy in relation to the context of the students that are in their building every day. And like you said, there is that check and balance, because if for some reason the school administrator is not applying that policy fairly, then there is an avenue of complaint for that student or their family, and we'll take it up.
Anything else in the handbook?
In the elementary handbook?
Yeah.
Just a note of the school committee members. So the student representative is different. I don't know if that's-
That didn't get changed.
It didn't get changed. And then it also says that my term ends December 331.
You're here for-
We're hopeful. But 2017, so. And I'm the only one, so it's really interesting. What does that mean? But anyway, just a note.
We'll make this.
Yeah, I noticed that too, Casey. I mean, if you look through the listings underneath the people, there's variations that don't necessarily, it seems like there should be a format that, you know, Marissa should have her role as-
And I think that's part of the general handbook, so we each have our own sections.
Right.
So generally, what happens is the handbook is compiled and the information that all of you are talking about is in front of everybody's.
Right.
And then the high school has a section, the elementary has a section, the micro. So I think because this was just on elementary and then just the high school, they compiled it in that way. So it's probably something that's going to be incorrect on all of them.
Yeah, it is.
It is, yeah.
On that same page, I had a question, and I realize it's on all of them. That same page where we have a paragraph ahead of this chart, and it says active parent involvement is encouraged in a parent teacher organization, school councils, East Hampton Community Association, school volunteers, Chamber of Commerce, and the Regional Education Business Alliance. I had questions about, is all of that still current and relevant? All of this, starting with East Hampton Community Association? I guess I was thinking, I wonder if that needs updating?
Like, is there any East Hampton Community Association?
I don't think so.
I'm trying to remember if it's like one of the things I've liked on Facebook, but I don't seem familiar.
I was just asking Mary Cadres if she could speak to that, the East Hampton-
The East Hampton City Arts.
Association.
I think it's the font.
Yeah, I think it is. And the regional education business, I don't know what that is. But anyway, I was just wondering if you could update that to reflect the current school-related opportunities for parents to become involved. It's in all of them.
You can just use the silver language.
So it's just to host anything that- Anything else for the elementary level? I'd like to change the student and family-
I was just thinking that. I like that, too. I like that, too.
We all decided it was a more inclusive title for the handbook.
Well, I'm really, like, in student handbooks, we're really asking families to follow through on most of the stuff and follow up with their student on particular things.
Especially on an elementary level when a lot of the students can't read.
Yeah, so I appreciate that. We're recognizing that labor and investment, you know, and that contribution to our community.
Okay. Do we need to move on now? Any further discussion of that handbook?
No, I'm good with that one.
Okay. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the elementary student and family handbook.
Second?
For the, do I need to do the other?
Oh, sorry.
For the 2017, 2018 school year.
With the changes mentioned.
With the changes mentioned.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Moving on to the middle school handbook. Again, if you have any questions on the middle school handbook, on the changes that were made, and we will make those same changes to the middle school handbook that you suggested for the elementary handbook. Principal Belice?
The changes that we have at the middle school are the same, the summary that Allison gave you is the same.
Okay.
So I'll take a second swipe at the apple here, and just, and again, now I really have to apologize because she's not here, but to Alice's point regarding being careful about things being discriminatory, and again, I trust that administrators and students can understand the concerns that Sarah and Marissa have pointed out, but I can imagine a difficulty coming up if one student in one context can wear something that says something and have it be okay, and another student wear the exact same thing and have it not be okay. And I just-
I guess I would be curious about the situation, right? So how would you know that it wouldn't be okay? Well, probably someone would express that they are uncomfortable with it.
Like you said, Peter, it's all about-
Right. So if the, I guess the difficulty that I have is that, and this is why I come back to the education piece, I can almost imagine, because I've seen schools that do this, here's show and tell about what's okay to wear and what's not okay to wear to school. And that gives everybody a sense. And the challenge with it is that it's, when you do that, you have to build the context to address the point that you've made, Marissa, which I think is an important point, and be really clear with students so as to understand that, you know, whether it's in dress or in action, but to the extent that we can honor the idea that's expressed here, that all students be treated the same. I guess in part, it's the difference between equality and equity. It sounds as though the dress code that we're authorizing here is about equity, and I'm not sure that I fully always understand the distinction between equality and equity. And if the students don't understand it, then I think that we have not done enough to make clear to them. And so I guess all I'm urging, because I've already voted in favor of one, and I will vote in favor of the others, with this cautionary note, that it places a burden, that you don't wait until a student is found to be in violation of the code to start the education process. That, and we should all be able to look at a student who stands up here at public speak dressed and be able to say, "Yeah, that's fine to go to East Hampton High School, or East Hampton Middle School, or East Hampton Elementary School." If we're not clear about it, simply delegating it to the school administrator, I think puts the school administrator in an awful position, because then we might second-guess them when it's appealed to us. It should be clear. And I know it can't be as clear as the speed limit on a highway or something that's, you know, numerically objective like that, but we should strive to get as close to that as possible to avoid things that, as has been pointed out to us already tonight, are perceived as discriminatory between one point of view and another, rather than between genders here, but between one point of view and another, because that is, I think, highly problematic for students and can leave administrators vulnerable to unfortunate second-guessing after the fact.
So you're basically leaving you, like, further clarity?
Yeah, I mean, if I remember correctly, during one of the discussions and presentations that we had by students before, and I guess I should back up to say that, given the compelling nature of what we heard tonight from a student, my understanding, the process that we got to with this, am I right that the same language is also in the high school code, correct? That the dress code is consistent in language through all three?
You know, maybe we should have Assistant Principal Welson come up and talk about the high school handbook, because they went through a much more, much lengthier process in terms of making the revisions to their handbook.
Right, and I don't want, Superintendent, I don't want to delay, there's lots of important things here. I, and I applaud, and I'm glad that a student came and spoke to us tonight. I trust that this argument was heard and deliberated by the folks who've okayed the dress code that's here. So I guess that would be the simple question, is, was, my question to the high school administrators would be, is, was this argument considered, and what was their response to it?
So could I have Ms. Welson come up and speak to that?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you about our handbook. Could I be allowed to give you a little bit of background of how we got to this point? Great. And to your point, we were going to provide a summary, but there's so many changes, we just thought, giving you the full handbook with the strikeouts and the changes in red, made the, our EHS moon red, it made the most sense. The background of getting to this point was we wanted and needed an update, and we wanted to make sure that many voices were heard. In June, we had a faculty meeting and informed our, spoke with our faculty that in the summer we'd have meetings on updating the handbook. We did, in fact, have two summer meetings for faculty. We researched a variety of other school handbooks, probably eight in the area handbooks. We reached out to Phil Fulgerman from the Anti-Defamation League and provided the ADL with our handbook and the progressive discipline matrix, and asked and sought out suggestions for, from the ADL. We were provided some suggestions in late August. We informed the faculty at our August professional development days of updating the handbook and requesting input from all. And then we discussed the handbook at a full faculty meeting also. We formed a handbook committee, which consisted of two teachers, Molly Jacobson and Quinn Lonchek Brenahan, two guidance, George Sampson and Chad McGuire, two administrators, Julianne Levin and Nancy Weld, and our SRO, Rick Rogalsky. I want to thank all of them for their hard work, their efforts, and their time in giving to this valuable work that we're trying to do to make our handbook much more updated and current and responsive to all the voices that we then heard. We had four handbook committee meetings in September and October, where we gathered information from a variety of voices and constituencies. We created a survey that we provided to all staff on focused areas of the current handbook, and we discussed the results and other items of interest at our meetings. We then collaborated on creating the updates. We presented the proposed handbook to the school council for feedback on October 5th. We then presented to the student council on both the 12th and the 19th. We presented to EHS team leaders on the 16th of October, and we discussed with students and staff throughout the fall the handbook. We listened to input and continued the process of updating it until literally sending it to you on the 19th. Additional changes have come also from our district attorney. There's two additional changes that I'd like to provide for you at this point. And we're definitely committed to having all voices heard, and there may be a couple of grammatical changes that even over the weekend we came up with, that we'd like to just be allowed a little leeway in fixing a couple grammatical points. The highlights of this handbook are that we're including our core value from our NEAS Core Values, which are the nest in the beginning, and our beliefs on learning, which are the eagles in the beginning. We have gender-neutral pronouns. They and they're have been utilized throughout the document. We have inclusive language. We have clarity of language. We have the inclusion of the Massachusetts Civil Rights Act. We have an updated dress code, an updated cell phone policy, a progressive discipline matrix, and restorative discipline explanations. We have clearer language on the requirements of graduation, including EHS and CTEC requirements. And we believe that there's much more user-friendly language for all. I'd like to thank Principal Burke and Curriculum Director Levin for their incredible effort and time in processing with me and also the handbook committee on making these updates. The EHS Handbook Committee is here on a regular basis to further discuss updates and potential changes in an effort to make this a living document for our entire EHS community. And moving forward, if this handbook is approved, we will inform parents and guardians. We will have grade-level meetings for all students. We will inform staff. We will have clarification on our media outlets within the school, which are our TVs up at Cafe Commons and throughout the hallway. And we will also have updates, periodic updates, on our daily bulletin, so that everyone has an understanding of what we're talking about, and also the opportunity for their voices to be heard moving forward for the committee. The committee is extremely excited and dedicated to continue to this work. It's a great group. They did a lot of work. I'm really proud to be, have worked with them, and we want to continue to make this a living document and hear from students. I did speak with Alice, I think the curriculum director spoke with her today. She sent that to me late last night, what she was going to read, and I spoke with her the other, just yesterday, I guess, on what her concerns were. She also acknowledged how happy she was with the updates, but would like to further discuss, you know, her point of view, and I think that's great. We encourage everyone to do that, and I think with those conversations, we're all better for that. Education is a two-way, you know, obviously a two-way street, and those discussions are great, and we'll definitely bring that to the handbook committee, too. So I thank you for letting me give you that information.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's certainly an impressive process. We thank you very much, and your hard work and dedication to getting this right, and we're grateful. It's really impressive, all that you've done.
All the people at this school- All the people at this school have really been wonderful, the committee and the people that have been working with it. They really want to get this to make sense and be what EHS needs. So thank you.
I'm extremely pleased to hear the input that you had from everybody.
Yes, thank you.
Very commendable. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks.
So Ms. Wilson is available now with your questions from committee members.
So just, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go right ahead.
So just to be clear, and I apologize, I was looking, trying to go from the electronic copy to the paper copy here. The first concern that Alice addressed was that strapless tops or shirts are prohibited. And the second was attire covering the top of the body must be long enough, right?
Must extend over, we have attire covering the top of the body must extend over the shoulders and be long enough to cover the nape.
And I see that one in red indicating is, is the, is the first, where's the first one of the two? Where does it say strapless tops or shirts? I just, I'm sure it's-
Two below it.
Right, but that's already out.
We had struck that, yes.
Right, okay. That was why I was confused. So that portion was already taken care of, okay.
And this statement that you have, attire covering the top of body, that statement is really designed to replace, and correct me if I'm wrong, the strapless tops or shirts are prohibited.
Along with tank tops with oversized armholes are prohibited.
Okay. I just have to share with you, for whatever it's worth, when I read that statement about attire covering the top of the body must extend over the shoulders and be long enough to cover, I interpreted that to mean, like, a student would have to wear short sleeves. Like, you couldn't wear a tank top or you couldn't wear something with spaghetti straps. I interpreted that to mean that the fabric had to extend this way.
That was my interpretation as well.
This would be where we need to clarify that with our students and inform them and educate, absolutely. It's not to be that-
I was kind of thinking, like, only muscle tees, no muscle tees? Like, that was kind of like where the boundary was in the way that I was thinking about it. So that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah.
That helps. And I think that that's, okay. So the portion that was of concern was just the section that talks, long enough to cover the nape and torso, okay.
And of course, I did think the same thing that Alice brought up is the fact that that really impacts female students a whole lot more significantly than it does male students. In terms of attire, their wardrobes, what they can or cannot wear, knowing that it also extends to usually school functions and what they can or cannot wear.
But that's not, but, but it's not that you have to wear short sleeves? You can, right?
Right.
Cool. Just wanted to make sure.
Still can be sleeveless.
So basically, this is saying no tube tops. Isn't this where we ended up? Didn't we end up talking about tube tops last time we did this, too?
Well, strapless tops.
Strapless, yeah.
Yeah.
Back to the strapless.
Yeah, okay, maybe that's what they're called, all right.
I understand a tube top.
Yeah, you get it, right? Okay, this makes, that makes a lot more sense to me. I don't know if it would be, if it would make sense to put, like, an example in there or I don't know how to clean that, clean that up a little bit because I'm just worried that, like, if all of us were confused about it, that, like, parents who are encountering it and then shopping for their kids and then arguing with them about it might also be confused.
The over the shoulder part?
Yeah, yeah.
So you're thinking they mean, see, I, I saw for what it is, the shoulders. You're not talking about sleeves.
Right. I guess, but-
But that wouldn't be a bad idea.
And it's not completely has to be, it doesn't all have to be covered. It would just be-
It just has to be, yeah, I see.
Shoulders.
The way it was, just extend over the-
More clear.
You're saying, we have the strapless tops.
Strapless tops are prohibited.
Right. It doesn't actually, it doesn't have, actually have to extend over the shoulder like a cap.
No, it does not.
Yeah, so just, yeah, just like a little-
Go back to the strapless tops or shirts are prohibited?
I don't know.
It's pretty clear.
Yeah, it's clear, but isn't that exactly the concern that was raised?
That was the concern, yeah.
So now that we're clear, it sounds like while in one case, something is already out, right? The key is that it's only by bringing in, right? So in a way, this presentation tonight, we still have a written copy for folks who are at home of what Alice Wanmaker submitted. In a sense, we're going back to something that we previously said was already out. And if we're going to bring it back in, then I think now we've got to address both the concerns that she raised. Because they're, they're good, they're good points from an economic perspective for parents who are trying to shop, from an educational perspective, so that kids know when they're in dress code and when they're not. I mean, sometimes kids want to be out of dress code because they want to be over that bright blue line because they, they want to have that conversation with some, usually there's something else going on and that's just a way of, of starting that conversation. But for a student who wants to be within the expectations of the school, it needs to be clear.
May I make a suggestion? That I would go back, that not to bring back what was already out, but to, that I would go back to the handbook committee? We'd come up with a way to clarify what we actually are meaning so that along the way, so while folks are shopping or doing whatever, that there will be clarity of what exactly that means. And then that could just be an addendum to just sending that out in an email and to our students to let them know exactly what we mean with clarity. Would that make sense?
Sounds good to me.
And to also review it in light of the concern about it being impacting one females more than males or, you know, the inequity there.
We can have further conversation about that, absolutely.
I do think that this is much more, there's a lot more, like, gender equity in this than there was previously, like, absolutely. And in the middle school policy as well. I'm really happy to see the way that it's been redone.
Alice prompted that a couple of years ago at the middle school level and it was amazing.
Yeah, that was, that was really great for her to bring that to everybody's attention in that way.
So there were, like, a lot of significant changes made to the handbook and I think a lot of students would appreciate and have, like, their own comments about it. Like, so is there going to be an announcement in school or some sort of email sent out or notification?
Yeah, so we'd be doing emails. We would have grade level assemblies so that every student and every faculty member will hear what the clarification of the new changes are. It would be rolled out over a period of time so that it wouldn't be like tomorrow, this is the new policy. So over, definitely inform and educate. We'd send emails, we'd inform parents, and we'd make announcements. And maybe we'd focus on one thing those couple of days. So here's a change and over the course of a couple of days in the bulletin and on the announcement or on the TV screens, hey, just to let you know X, Y, and Z. And so we definitely are, this is definitely about educating folks and giving some time to have folks understand what the changes are.
Right, and clarity.
And clarity, yes.
Thank you very, very, very much.
I'm sorry if you already said and I missed it. Did this go to the student council?
It did, twice. I presented to them on two Thursdays in a row. And the executive board of the student council had a hard copy of this prior to me going to the full student council.
So did the students have any questions about this at all? Because this has gone around a couple of times.
Right, so some, there was at student council a little bit on cell phones and a little bit on, on dress code. And just, not in a, like, in a, just provide information and clarity. And we want to know what this is more than what it isn't. And I think that the cellphone policy is also much more approachable, respectful, current, and makes a lot of sense. And that also is based on the survey that we've sent out to all of the faculty and staff.
So I'm just looking at the electronic devices section now. So one of the changes to that is that number six was removed, which is that electronic devices used inappropriately may be confiscated? So are we saying that they now can, can no longer be confiscated?
Teachers will not be confiscating cell phones, electronic devices. If you go down to the consequences right below it, it's a progressive consequence. And, yes. And there's not going to be confiscation. However, cell phones will be, cell phones shall not be visible or on during class times unless specifically requested by the teacher to help achieve lesson objectives. Which the, that you absolutely can have your cellphone being used to achieve the lesson objectives from the teacher's point of view, you know? So that's a conversation.
That makes so much more sense than the previous. Because a lot of, I mean, when I took statistics, like, my graphing calculator was my cellphone, you know? So it's, it's, it's an important piece of technology now, so.
We use it a lot during class for review games if we have to Google anything. But yeah, we use it a lot, so this is a good change.
It's a machine in our hands, right? And it should be part of our classroom if it makes sense with our lesson objectives. It's when it's not being used that way that that was a little bit of the rub. And then how do we handle that? So this makes much more sense. It's progressive, it's understandable. And parents and families are involved after students and teachers, teachers and students are the first intervention. And then administration and students and teachers and then parents also and families, parents, guardians and families. So it makes a lot more sense, I think.
I should clarify that I took statistics as a post-bac course, like, long after I finished college. I'm not actually 17, so. I know, there's sometimes questions about that.
I don't have a cellphone until-
No, no, I know, I know. And I was, anyway, I'm sorry.
Was the decision to just, to go beyond the Mass Civil Rights Act and say that hate speech and putting symbols is barred to avoid getting into the intent standard that the law requires? Is that why we stated it that way?
I think it was to provide more clarity to what exactly we were talking about with, and actually including a lot more of the Mass Civil Rights Act and then also on the dress code along with-
Right, but the, but the law doesn't, right, the law says it's important to know that hateful and offensive speech standing alone does not necessarily violate the law. Our dress code says it's barred. So we go further with our dress code than the Mass Civil Rights Act. As I read it as a layman, understand it to say, right? Because the law, Mass Civil Rights Act, requires that a judgment be made about the intent. Which, and that's why I thought perhaps you'd made the decision to do it this way because now you don't have to worry about intent, which I can understand because figuring out why, why somebody does something is awfully hard to do sometimes. And it seems to me like that, that would be a reason to do it. I'm still as concerned as ever about the road that we're, that we're on there. But at least the law, as it's written, acknowledges that somebody wearing a symbol by itself is not in violation of the Mass Civil Rights Act until you show intent or coercive efforts being made to make another person feel some way or compel them to do something against their, their will. And, you know, I, I would submit that I think it would be okay for our dress code, it would be better for our dress code to specifically reference the language in the Mass Civil Rights Act than to simply say it's barred.
Well, maybe I can weigh in here. This is probably a good jumping point to talk about what we did today. Principal Burke, Officer Regali, Superintendent Folesby and myself were at the Department of Justice Conference today, which dealt with hate speech in the K through 12 schools. And there, they made a very clear distinction between freedom of speech and, freedom of expression and hate speech. And we walked out of that conference with a number of excellent guidelines on responding to hate speech and bias. And they talked about, they gave multiple examples of how something that a student would wear would disrupt the education of students. And that it's becoming clearer as it becomes a discussion in schools across the state and in our country, it becomes clearer and clearer what needs to be a guideline. So we did walk out with many pieces of information that will help administrators and teachers. In fact, the title for this is "A Guide for Administrators", this is just one piece. Administrators, counselors, and teachers responding to hate and bias in schools. And it deals with exactly those issues. So I think those, I feel really comfortable about the wording that you have there because it falls within the guidelines of what we learned today in terms of what is the expectation for creating a positive schooling climate and preventing disruption of the education of others. So I'm feeling really comfortable about it after today.
That's great, that's great, great. Thank you for going through that.
Oh, it was phenomenal.
Yeah, I'm jealous, it sounds awesome.
Ms. Wilson, I have a question for you on another topic.
Yes.
In the handbook. The section that talks about requirements for graduation, with all of the CTEC notations?
Yes.
I'm curious, are those requirements for CTEC the requirements that have always been in place?
Yes.
Okay, so nothing's changed?
It's not a change at all. It's just that they were omitted in previous, in previous handbooks. And we felt that that should be there for CTEC students or students, EHS students who also attend CTEC. So that it's clearer. We just, one of the big points for our work was clarity. And we wanted to put in everything that makes sense and that students are abiding by. The other thing is with the 10 credits of PE and health, that had already been voted on. But it was a change from the handbook that was 16, 17 because you voted on that in August of 16. And then there was a change in the program studies in the spring. So I wanted to put the, you've already voted on the PE and the health requirements, but I just wanted to acknowledge that that was a change. That's why we put it in red. But you had already voted on that.
It reflects directly on program studies that were passed last year. That information is just now in the handbook.
Okay, there you go. I also noticed on that same page that you changed, you have a statement here, "For the purpose of class meetings and activities, including the class dues, students would be considered first-years, sophomores, juniors, and seniors."
Yes.
I wondered if you would want to talk about that at all?
Again, about inclusive language, right? And just like we were going to gender-neutral pronouns, that we felt that it was-
Wise.
And what we wanted to do to go to first-years as opposed to freshmen.
I really, I really like that.
Thank you.
It also reminds me of Harry Potter.
Yeah, exactly. Absolutely. So thank you for pointing that out, but that was the reason.
Interesting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Under the library section. I wonder if there's-
Page is set up.
Page 40.
40.
I just think there might be a typo, not a typo, but a word missing or-
I think you might be right. Yes, and, yes.
Where is this?
On page 40 in the library section.
To do so?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, yeah, that, cool.
Needs to be fixed, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Will the first-year language be followed through with the yearbook as well?
That's a great question. And that would be something that I think we should make sure that we talk to the yearbook folks and our publications people. But that does make sense.
Yeah.
That's what we're using, so I would think that's a good point that we need to make sure that we bring that up with them also.
That is a good point.
I just have to say, I think that progressive discipline matrix, too, is excellent.
Yeah.
That's excellent, it's so clear. And the explanation of restorative discipline and all of that is excellent. And searching, I thought I had one other thing.
That also is another way that we're trying to educate and be clear about how we've done restorative discipline. And we'll continue to do that. Again, clarity as much as possible for everyone.
Anyone else, any other questions?
I just have a question. I'm looking at administrative detentions. Are either lunch or- I'm looking at administrative detentions, are either lunch or after school? I'm just curious what the thinking is there because to me it's very different asking students to come after school for detention. It's a, um, a more serious, um, strong message than having students take a lunch detention. So I'm just wondering where the definition and the distinction is and how that's applied.
So that's also a great question. Um, the lunch detention is, um, where a student is in, um, not out in Cafe Commons. Um, it's for that lunch period and it's a quiet period and they do work, um, if they choose. I would say that, um, I would normally give, or we would normally, um, look at administrative detentions, be either, and you bring up another point that we didn't include here, it can also be before school. Some students may choose to come before school and do that and that's absolutely fine. I try to work out whatever works best for the student, um, in terms of if there's, if there's sibling care at home or other responsibilities. Um, we're always trying to manage that, um, what works best for the student.
I see.
There are certain things that I would say that are, um, much more, um, I'd be, we'd be much more inclined to do an administrative detention, which is thirty or a sixty minute detention, um, as opposed to a lunch detention. So.
Sorry, that, I can't hear.
Sure, as, um, so I'd say probably in terms of progressive discipline, a lunch detention might be first, but it depends on really what, um, is, is occurring. I'd say most of those happen because of coming in, um, late. That's what lunch detentions, it's tardy detentions for the most part.
Okay, so it's a tardy detention.
Tension is lunch.
Is lunch, but a more significant.
Disruptive or.
Would either be before. That seems a little more, that makes more sense to me.
Yes, that.
Traditional.
Because if it was for the same, if it was for the same infraction and one person got a lunch detention, which occurs during the school day, and the other person got an after school detention, that would not seem helpful.
And I need to point out also, because this has come up, students absolutely have, um, their own lunch or can purchase a lunch, um, or get a lunch, um, in the Cafe Commons. They just go down and then come back. So it's not that you don't have lunch during lunch detention.
Right.
It's not a starvation detention.
It's not, but there has been, um, that's actually come up even this year.
But a lunch detention doesn't require that you have a longer school day. Whereas the other ones do it before or after, okay.
Any other questions for Ms. Wilson?
I have one other question about the, um, restorative discipline passage.
Sure.
So. Oh, yes, sorry, I've.
Forty-seven.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
So, um, I like this, this statement of purpose, the goal of restorative practices is to empower students to give back to the community in a comparable manner to how that student's offense harmed the community. But then the sentence later that says, if a student continues exhibiting similar behaviors, the severity of the discipline will also increase. Here I'm sort of just being a little obsessed with words, but, um, the word severity is standing out to me because I think that the discipline that the student is asked to do is, is actually a service, it's a giving back. And so severity seems to suggest that like you're being more punished when really you're asked to take on a greater responsibility or something. Um, so I'm not sure exactly what might be the right way to reword that, but something that is more in keeping with the philosophy and purpose of this restoring and returning to your community.
Great point.
Would extent work?
Yeah, maybe something as simple as that.
I would also hate for like, like students who are marginalized and, or often marginalized in some way, or, or I'm thinking specifically of disabled students because that is, you know, the example that I thought of. Like somebody uses derogatory language about students with disabilities, then they're asked to go volunteer, you know, with people with disabilities. I would just hate for them to think of themselves as, as being, you know, disciplined, you know what I mean? Like of being some kind of punishment. So, but I don't think that that's what that's saying, but I did have the same thought that you did when I read that initially. So, um, yeah, that's, that.
So is extent.
Extent.
Acceptable? Does that make sense for us?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, Sarah, do you have any other?
Yeah, no, I mean, I, I think, um, yeah, I think, I think extent is definitely, is definitely on the, you know, you know, part of it I think is language and part of it is just like my, my experience in the world too. And kind of like the way that, that I've seen these things kind of be applied and, uh, I'm, I just, I don't know, I'm totally for restorative discipline. Um, and I think one of the issues is that we, um, haven't had as much experience with it. And we haven't seen it and it's, we haven't seen as many examples of it in the world. Um, so I'm excited about seeing more of it, I guess. And I think that that, that change, that slight change in language does make me feel a little bit better about it.
You could also just have it say the extent of the service.
Yeah.
If you want, if you want to.
I think that is.
Come in entirely.
But, well, it's also restorative discipline though. Yeah.
Right.
No, I think, I think extent of the, of the discipline. I think that's a good start. I'd be interested to see, I'd be interested to see like kind of what the feedback is on it and how students experience it.
Yeah, and as people are working in this, the language will develop sort of organically.
Yeah, yeah.
You'll learn what you use.
But, but then, like, will increase though, too?
Well, um, walked away today with this on.
That's so interesting that you.
A restorative practices guide, and I have not read it all. I, I literally just got back from Lister. Um, but one of the things they talked about is having consequences and expectations adjust accordingly to the behavior. So something.
Maybe adjust.
You know, that we'll, we'll have that response, those expectations, um, adjust accordingly.
Yeah.
And I guess, I guess also the other thing that, and we can't, I mean, I don't necessarily expect this to all be written in here, but I would really, I hope and I, um, I feel like I'm probably, this is probably, should be assumed, but I'm, I just think like if, if there's two students who are having a conflict and one student says something that's really hurtful to the other student, I would hope that the other student wouldn't be pressured to engage in some kind of, um, restorative practice before they're ready to accept an apology or before they're ready to let something go.
Absolutely.
You know, yeah.
Yeah, I think that is the one thing, have to be really cautious that then it doesn't become the, the burden of the community that's been harmed to then.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to focus on like the student who's hurting other people at the, that, without, and not focus on the student who's been hurt, you know? But no, I think, I think this is a good start. I'm looking forward to hearing more about it.
And one way that we've handled that, if I may interject, is we have a reflection sheet that students also use that, um, posed various questions about how were they feeling? How do they view what their actions, um, did to the surrounding, to the classroom, to the other students, to another person, to the community? And then they think about that and that's actually a way that they've come up with, um, students have come up with ideas of what to do next and how to repair the situation.
That's cool.
Yeah.
That's really neat.
Well, what I'd like to say is really, I mean, I was blown away by today's conference and we all walked out with this. And it has a number of, um, ideas for schools to look at. So I think as the year goes on and we have time for administrators and this, you know, teachers and every, of this whole school community to look through these, um, and this particular one is free.
We can get more copies.
We can get more copies. I think that it'll be a living document that will, you know, change as we all digest this information.
Do they use the word restorative discipline or is it really restorative practices?
Uh, restorative practices, um, this, you know, I'm flipping through, you're talking about restorative chats, there are scripts.
Restorative practices, yeah. Because restorative justice, I believe, is a.
Yeah.
Actual program.
Yeah.
But that's, yeah, it's basically practices.
Yeah.
And we probably, if we may, um, continue to stay with restorative discipline, just because there is a kind of entity that is of itself in that other term and that truly is not what we're doing right now.
I see.
And there's a staff member that, you know, that there's a whole procedure and program with that, so we're doing restorative discipline.
Right, right.
I see, these are.
That makes sense.
May I just, um, clarify that the wording that you suggested is the extent, um, the extent of the discipline will adjust accordingly? Is that okay? Thank you.
I don't like, know much about restorative discipline, but like, I believe it was stated that it's not intended to be like a terrible punishment for the student, more of like a learning process. And I feel like the word discipline has negative connotations to it. So I was thinking, or restorative consequence, if that makes sense, because that could be both positive and negative. And in this case, I guess we mean positive. So that was just my.
It's an interesting idea.
Is it, that is interesting.
Is there?
I, I will say that there are times, so part of the restorative, um, part that we also do is there may be a, um, administrative detention, then, then is also coupled with a restorative, um, part, so that may happen at the same time. It may, if the student wants to, um, or it might be something out in the community or something that a community member is coming in or, um, so it might not be right at the same time as, as, as the administrative discipline. So there are consequences that are sometime, and there's, sometimes there's discipline also that also includes repairing and restoring the community.
And you have said that you're going to continue to have meetings.
Yes.
Throughout the year, so that could be a good, uh, topic to bring up during one of those meetings.
Any other comments, questions? Okay.
Uh, thank you very, very much.
Thank you for all the.
Thank you for all the work that.
Appreciate it.
This is a lot of work, I really appreciate it.
Okay, we move to approve the Whitebrook Handbook and the High School Handbook. We have a motion for Whitebrook.
I've moved to approve the Whitebrook Middle School, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, Student and Family Handbook.
Second.
Uh, was in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to abstain pending the, the clarification, um, in response to the, the questions asked by, by Alice and I'll use this as an opportunity right before I depart and I apologize to my colleagues that I have to, to leave, that earlier, Alice, in your absence while I was complimentary, um, and I'm sure you don't mind that, I did, uh, attempt to make a leap from part of your argument to an argument that I was making. I'm in no way ascribing that you have that motivation. It's not, uh, and I don't want anyone to think that, that you would agree with me in, in any of that, but I did find your observations to be, um, thought provoking and, and as they were previously, appreciate them very much. So if you need to, um, issue a disclaimer, you know, at this meeting or at a future meeting, I'm, I'm sure everyone would, would understand and appreciate. I'm abstaining, yep. And I'm passing the, the time to my colleagues here. Thanks very much.
Okay, thanks.
Good night, Peter, thank you.
Good night. East Hampton High School Handbook.
Motion to approve East Hampton High School, two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen, Student and Family Handbook.
Second. With the changes we discussed. With the changes we discussed.
Along with the, the other two additions from that.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, with the, the additional additions.
Page thirty-one and thirty-five.
Which is these, that they handed.
Yes.
Page thirty-one and thirty-five.
Which is the non, it's the nondiscrimination statement and the, um, the statement that if a student's primary language is not English, a translated handbook will be made available, which is great.
Thank you.
Okay, so the motion is to approve the East Hampton High School Handbook with the changes as discussed.
As discussed.
Okay.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion has been seconded to approve the EHS Handbook with changes as discussed. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving on.
We have a lot more to cover. Thank you. We have, um, the administrators have all done their goals for me now and so we will take, uh, a couple of them at each, um, meeting to, um, share with you and see if you have any questions, their goals were, um, uh, written, um, using mine as a model and in through discussions with me about what the needs were at each level. So, uh, the first, uh, I'd like to present to you are the elementary principal goals. And again, these are the same for Maple Center and Peppin. And, um, Principal Rabello is here if you have any questions on the elementary, uh, principal goals. You do not need to approve these, those are goals that I approved, so this is informational. Any questions or comments? And the next would be the, uh, high school, um, principals' goals and school improvement plan. Uh, any questions or comments on those goals?
Yes, sir?
Okay.
Thank you. Uh, we now have the memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer and Marissa, I'm going to ask you to speak to that because you were the chair of the policy, uh, subcommittee and it was in the policy subcommittee that we, um, did the work on the memorandum of understanding and came to this, um, memorandum that's being presented to you this evening.
Sure. So the memorandum that we have here, uh, is based upon a, a template that we received from the district attorney and that a number of districts in the region use. We made some adjustments here and there to reflect our district in particular and, um, and to sort of highlight some of the, the district's goals. We had a collaborative process where, um, we worked together as a policy subcommittee and with the superintendent and also Chief Alberti came and spoke with us about his understanding of the SRO role and, um, passed a draft back and forth a few times. Uh, I think to, to speak to what we were really aiming for with this particular memorandum was to bring it up into, uh, the sort of twenty-first century understanding of the SRO position, make sure it's really up to date in its language and in its, um, in its emphases. And so it's looking at really making sure that we have articulated goals and articulated boundaries such that the SRO is offering, um, a resource for the school, making sure that the school is safe and violence free, um, while we're also ensuring that school-based discipline is really handled by teachers and that we are, um, outlining our goal that the school, the presence of police officers in the school building shouldn't result in increased contact with students with the justice system, but that it should be a really, um, positive and, uh, positive role that is there to protect students while also protecting students' civil rights. And so this MOU also outlines, um, various forms of training and background that that SRO position should, um, should be informed by, including, um, you know, nondiscriminatory policing and interaction with students on the basis of race or ethnicity, religion, LGBTQ, discipline, uh, sorry, um, disabilities.
There you go.
One of those D words. So that way our police officer in the building has the same kind of training and is treating students with equity in the same way that, that all staff and faculty are.
I think another, another, can I add to that? Is that okay?
Yeah, please do, thank you.
Another, another thing that we, um, that we included was that, um, there, and you can read the whole, the whole document, it's pretty long, included was, um, data collection and monitoring, so we'll have, um, data collected throughout the year, um, just about like what, um, what the, the, um, incident reports are within the schools, um, kind of how the SRO is, is being used within the schools, um, like how many calls for service there have been, um, crimes, you know, that have been committed, um, in, adjacent to the schools or in the schools. And like all of that will be, um, compiled into a report that will, that, or like, more like a presentation that school committee will, will receive at the end of the year, just to like make sure that we're keeping, keeping up, that our goals with the SRO are being, um, we're, we're on the right track, basically. And, and one thing that I thought was important, um, so like my, my background is, um, special education and in particular working with students with autism, uh, spectrum disorders. And my experience as, you know, working, um, in schools as a, as a consultant in my previous job before the job I have now, um, I was, I was often, um, just really, um, disturbed by a lot of the discipline, um, that I saw those students experiencing, not in our schools, in, in other schools in the area. Um, I never actually did any work in the East Hampton schools. Um, and one of the things that, that I found was really helpful is when they did have a relationship with the adults that they were working with. So when, you know, I've, when there was an adult involved in kind of a disciplinary incident with a student, um, and this is true for all students, I think, if there was a pre-existing relationship and they knew each other and the student already trusted that person, um, things went much better and things were much safer for the student and for other students in the school. Um, and another thing that I've, um, been very aware of in my work is the number of times, um, that schools do have to contact the police, um, during the day. And a lot of times it's not, it doesn't have anything to do with the students, what the students in the school are actually doing. It's things like somebody's, you know, non-custodial. It's things like somebody's, you know, non-custodial parent has shown up and is demanding that they leave with them, or there's something like really sketchy happening, you know, on the same block, and they're worried about how it will affect the students, or there's been, you know, like a note that's been found, that's scary. And so like, schools would be, we would be talking to the police in those situations anyway, so I'd rather we talk to somebody who knows us and knows our schools and knows our kids and knows our community versus just calling up whatever state trooper happens to be answering the phone that day, you know. So that was kind of the way that I approached this, and I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that, because I think this is a really delicate topic right now, and there's a lot of baggage that goes along with it, and I just wanted to be like transparent about how we were, the questions we were asking and what we were, what we were thinking about when we were doing this. So I think we've, I'm happy with what we've come up with, you know, and we approached it really intentionally and really carefully. Yeah. Anybody else? Sorry.
Well, I think like anything else in our community, number one, I think the police chief was commendable and did everything possible to work with the school committee and the members and our superintendent, and, you know, providing drafts, looking at, you know, the DA's office, looking at different drafts and going over things and working it over. So I think it's just, I think our community policing here in East Hampton speaks for itself, and just having that camaraderie and the friendliness and the welcomingness of our police department and having it actually be not only part of our community but part of our schools, I think speaks bounds. And again, just the collaboration of the chief, the superintendent, and the school committee, all working on the same draft to get to the same end, something that meets all of our needs.
And I would also like to express my appreciation to the chief for his collaboration with us, and he did send our interim school resource officer, Officer Rick Rogalski, to school resource officer training for two weeks. He's completed that training, and I think as Cindy Klosinski mentioned this evening, Officer Rogalski joined us today at the training, so he's very excited about the position and very, very willing and wanting to learn and to be a, an important member of our school community.
It's nice when somebody's not just appointed to a position, but really wants that position, appreciates it, and makes it theirs. It's very different.
And this actually ties into something that we asked Chief Alberti about, which was like, is there, like, because I, you know, I don't know very much about how police training happens and like how people become police, because I don't think the Police Academy movies are actually accurate. But one of, one of the things that we asked was like, is there like an SRO track? Like somebody, do people like join, you know, become police officers because they want to become school resource officers? And he said that like generally, like, I mean, he hasn't heard about anybody doing that. So I guess I just want to put it out there too, that, you know, if this is the sort of work that you're interested in doing, you know, I think that a lot of people who might be interested in this work aren't necessarily, don't necessarily realize that they could do it through being a police officer. So I think it was just, it was just something I hadn't thought about.
And it's very different than being on the beat.
Yeah.
Very different than the beat cop, and very different, so it's, I think it's very commendable that we have somebody that's very interested in being a SRO officer.
Yeah, and that's a big deal, too.
It is a huge deal.
I know that was something we were concerned about. We didn't want to just get somebody slotted in whom, to fill in a space, so, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I like the partnership and the collaboration there and the training for the school resource officer, because this person, like anyone, we would ask to be trained to be with our students.
And we are saying, we do say in the agreement that we want them to attend our professional development trainings.
Nice.
So that's, that was a big part of our, of our discussions, was making sure that they were involved as a, as a, you know, staff member in the school, you know, in the same training.
And it goes without saying that as a police officer, they have all kinds of training. This was just an added, you know, an added plus that this training today was available and obviously willing to go and happy to go, but they're trained in many ways as an officer before they get to this point.
Right, of course. And as an officer who's in the schools, it's a little bit different than an officer who's on the street, so it goes without saying that they're trained.
Right.
It's another piece of the training, which I think is really important and goes to the trust.
Yeah, yeah.
If you look at someone, you know, in some ways, yes, the police are there to protect us, and then for some, based on history or experience or however their upbringing is, it hasn't necessarily been that way for what they have experienced in their life, and so trust is important so that, you know, if there ever is an issue, that someone feels comfortable going to school resource officer, too. So I think.
Very important, the comfort is very important.
Yeah, so I appreciate all of the work that you guys have done, and it's really clearly laid out here, and so it's a really good, good foundation for the expectation, so I appreciate it.
I learned a lot I didn't know.
Yeah.
It was good. I was glad to be part of the process.
Suggestions for change, any?
I think you've been over it in detail, and I would be happy to approve the memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer.
There's a motion that's been seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding for the school resource officer. All those in favor? Motion passes.
That'd be funny if I voted against it after writing it. Sorry, it'd just be a lot of drama.
Great job. Okay, moving on. Just a quick update on the ten-point action plan. I provided you a copy of this, and I've highlighted the pieces that have been updated. So it provides student training. The facilitators have been appointed for the spirit program, spirit training, and they will be, for the training that occurs on November 2nd and 3rd. Julianne, is that their training or is that the actual program?
Facilitator training is on the first, program is on the second and the third.
Right, so we had a number of community members volunteer to facilitate. Community members who have experience as facilitators, so we were very excited about that, and they will have their own training with members of the Department of Justice who are trainers for this program across the country. And then the program for students will be on November 2nd and November 3rd, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so that, there's that. Under, could be the stakeholder advisory committee, stakeholder, that's on the second page. Stakeholder advisory committee members have been chosen and were trained on October 21st and 22nd, and they will begin having, I believe there'll be monthly meetings, and I learned from our Director of Curriculum, Julianne Levin, that the training went very well, that it was, it appeared to be a good experience for everyone, and people are looking forward to having their first committee meeting and to be active participants in, you know, looking at the climate and culture of our high school and making recommendations to administration. And Julianne, would you like to say anything else about?
I was just about the spirit program.
Want to say it?
Sorry.
We're still looking for note takers. If anyone's interested in being a note taker for the spirit program, that is still a position we need.
Thank you.
So each group needs a note taker as well as a facilitator. So get the word out, please, we'd like to have people volunteer for that.
Organizational skills and.
So is that two? Oh, I just.
Sorry, it's okay, I was not saying anything important.
The two note takers?
How many note takers do you need, Julianne?
Uh, we need four.
Four, yes.
One for each group.
Thank you. One for each of the groups.
Okay.
Thank you, Julianne. And then an update on the LEAP model. On August 31st, I didn't put this in earlier, but also on October 3rd, training for Whitebrook Middle School staff on teaching strategies from the LEAP model occurred, and Julianne Levin, again, our Director of Curriculum, who's a trained trainer, received her training from the collaborative, did the trainings for Whitebrook, and more trainings are scheduled throughout the year, and we'll give you updates on those as they occur. And on the last page, this is what Cindy was speaking about, this wasn't on our ten-point action plan, but I did mention at the last meeting that there are some administrative trainings, there's another one on Thursdays, as a matter of fact, the State Schools Program put on by the District Attorney's Office, so a number of us are going to that. But today, Principal Burke and Officer Rogalski and School Committee Member Klosinski and myself went to this training in Worcester, and we got lots of good information, amazing presenters, and we'd like to present the school committee with more information about that at a future meeting. So the updates.
I just wanted to acknowledge Julianne Levin for all of her work. She's been working very hard for the district for, as the curriculum director, but also as the diversity officer, really doing a lot of work, so I want to thank you very much. She's great.
She has, she's been just a tremendous asset to us in this, and she will retain part of that role of diversity officer. We are still looking for someone to be present in the school and to take reports of bias incidents. There's a posting that's out, and I believe it's on Craigslist as well, is that correct, Sue Colby? Yes. And so if you know of anyone who might be interested in that, please have them look at the posting and let us know of your interest.
It's a part-time position?
Yes, it's a, how many hours did we say it would be per week?
About eight hours a week.
Eight hours a week, right. So you can see all the information in the posting.
Julianne is also just regularly a, an educator for other districts, to show them and teach them all of these things that she does and share her knowledge with other districts, and we're proud, we're proud to have her as one of our own in all the work that she does.
Very proud, a tremendous addition to our administrative staff. And speaking of that, Julianne Levin now is also going to give us a presentation on MCAS results. Another part of her job.
Yes. This is what you've all been waiting for. My computer's going to work, too. There it is. So MCAS results were released last week, and so our, all of our embargoed data is now public data. Highly recommended that you find out, if you don't know already, about district profiles on the DESI website. It's just a wealth of information. If you like data, go to district profiles, which just has everything you could possibly want to know about any school district or school in the Commonwealth, so visit that website. All right.
Julianne, before you start, do you want to ask someone if they could check in a couple of lights right here by the overhead?
Mary, do you mind, Mary?
They're right behind you.
Just a couple of lights behind you, Mary?
Just in this area.
That's good.
Oh, that's great.
That's lovely.
That's good.
Thank you so much.
All right. So some of these slides I presented to you last year when we did the 2016 data report, and so I'm not going to go into much detail on some of the more informative slides, but I'm happy to send this PowerPoint to you all, and if you have any questions, come in and meet with me, and that goes for anyone in the community. I love talking about data. I'm not joking.
And anybody who's still here probably does, too.
I know. If they're still here, wow, that's awesome. But please do ask me any questions, because it's certainly not a transparent process how data gets presented in DESI, and so it's, if you need any help decoding anything, please let me know. So the purpose of Massachusetts Accountability System in 2017 is twofold. Our high school continued taking the legacy MCAS tests, and so the purpose for the legacy test is still to reduce proficiency gaps by half by 2017, starting from the 2011 baseline. However, for grades three through eight, we began taking last year the MCAS 2.0, the next generation MCAS, and the goal of that MCAS was to promote participation in MCAS and establish a 2017 baseline. The 2017 baseline will now be used for grades three through eight moving forward to reduce proficiency gaps by half for another five years. So that's where we are in terms of MCAS today. The measurement towards the goal for EHS is based on student performance, student growth, as well as indicators such as dropout rate, graduation rates, with English learners showing proficiency growth on the access test, so there are lots of different pieces that go into accountability for the high school. For grades three through eight, I'm so sorry, my small children are making this in my office, that's what's happening. They're fine. They're totally fine. There's a lot of candy going on. They're good, they are, they are. So the measurement towards the goal for grades three through eight was simply that we had to reach 95% participation for all subgroups. All subgroups that are reported have to be over 20 students per subgroup, so we don't actually have a lot of subgroups in this district, but we did need to meet our 95 participation rate, 95% participation rate for grades three through eight. That gives us our baseline data moving forward for MCAS. Okay, so our levels. The only school that received an accountability level this year was East Hampton High School, which did meet its proficiency gap narrowing goals, so they are a level one high school. Because we met our participation.
Wonderful. We might mention that's the third year in a row.
I will, I will mention that in the next slide, even. I've got this covered.
It's very impressive.
The rest of the, the rest of the schools in the district, including the district as a whole, did not receive a level because we met 95% participation in all of our subgroups. These are, these are the two slides actually that I'm skipping. If you want more information about PPI or the school percentile, please let me know. These slides are about how those are determined. So East Hampton High School is a level one school. In 2012, East Hampton High School is a level three school, and it was in the 15th percentile. For the last three years, we've been a level one school, and in each year, we have improved our percentile ranking up to 37th percentile in 2017. That is in comparison to other schools that have similar demographics and the same grade range, that is really impressive. The reason we're level one is because we are improving in student growth faster than other schools that have similar demographics and grade range.
Very impressive.
Obviously, the test was given in East Hampton High School at the 10th grade level in ELA Math and Science. There were increased percentages of all students receiving advanced for all content areas, so we increased the number of students in the advanced categories in ELA, Math, and Science for our 10th graders last year. We also decreased percentages of students in the, receiving either a warning or a failing designation for both ELA and Math. We were very close in Science, we just didn't quite get there, but we did a really nice job of increasing, pushing kids from the bubble up into those top levels and pulling kids up from those bottom levels. So I think that's also noteworthy. We are also on or above target for growth of all students in both ELA and Math. Also, our averages, our state, I'm sorry, our CPI averages for all three areas are equal to or higher than the state averages.
Very nice.
Which is another indicator of why we are level one. So academically, things are going very well. All right, Whitebrook. Whitebrook had the best participation for MCAS in the district. They had 100% participation, which doesn't actually mean every single student took the test, it means that there was probably one student who didn't, but yeah, it was one student who didn't, but that is absolutely the best participation in the district, and so we're really proud of the Whitebrook administration for really getting those kids to take the test, because this is our baseline year, and in a baseline year especially, you want as much data as possible so you can really track that student growth moving forward. I'm sorry, and the graphs you're looking at, you have no idea about, so I haven't explained them yet. On the left-hand side, you'll see that that's where Whitebrook students achieved, and the right-hand side is the state averages. So we still have some work to do in terms of pushing some kids from, I'm sorry, the language is partially meeting expectations into meeting expectations, and that is the work of Whitebrook right now, is really figuring out how to implement those tier-two interventions so that we're pushing kids across the bubble from partially meeting expectations into meeting expectations.
Partially meeting is green?
No, no, partially meeting is orange.
Oh, okay.
Green is meeting.
Oh, goes the other direction.
Sorry, yes. Red is, is. Red is, is not meeting expectations.
Oh, I get red, okay, I get it.
That's going to be consistent for the next few graphs, so it's good you asked that.
Okay.
Actually, I lied. The next graph is a totally different color scheme.
But it's the same direction.
But it's the same direction, yeah. I do love DESI. So again, though, on the left is our district data for Whitebrook, on the right is the state data. This is the science tests, so you'll see on the top 5th grade, we're pretty consistent with the state averages. Again, in 8th grade, we need to be pushing more of our students into meeting expectations for Science in 8th grade. We have implemented new science curriculum in all grades K through 8 this year, so this is really an area that we're focusing on and trying to improve our students' performance in Science. Grade 4, we had a really nice high point in our grade 4 math data this year. We implemented a program, a pilot curriculum unit for fractions, which is a sticky part of grade 4 standards, and it worked really well. If you, if you drill down into this data and look just at fractions, our grade 4 fractions data is far above the state averages, and so really, really good work being done by those 4th grade teachers in fractions. The 3rd grade teachers are also taking up that fractions work this year, so we're excited to see what's going to happen for, for those students as well. In grade 3, again, we're noticing, I'm sorry, I'm not explaining these very well, but on the bottom is the math data, and on the top is the English Language Arts data. Again, still, left-hand side is district, right-hand side is state data. So with math in grade 3, we're also looking pretty good around the state averages. What we are noticing is that we need to re-up our game on early intervention, which is part of what we're doing this year. We're updating our guided reading resources, excuse me, we're also implementing a new early literacy program for K through 2, to make sure that, that our students are reading at grade level by the time that they get to grade 3. So, we're doing some work on literacy here, but the math data is still looking really strong for us.
The reading is yellow's on the top.
That's true, yes, the reading's on the top. You see that sort of the spike in the yellow?
Yeah.
That's what we're addressing. Yep. So last year I gave you this theory of action about, so looking at this data, what are we going to do now? So last year we talked about making sure that we were using inclusive classroom models in order to meet our students' needs. That's all still definitely a focus for us, but what we noticed this year and last year was when you really look down at the subgroup data, especially around students with disabilities, but also our racial subgroups and our economic subgroups, we're switching around our theory of action a little. So our 2017 theory of action, if we integrate culturally proficient resources and teaching strategies into our curriculum, and equip educators with interventions for students in poverty and students coping with trauma, then all students will be better prepared to be global citizens with highly developed academic, social, and emotional skills. And I feel like this is, this is a key for us. So, that is the end of my very short presentation on MCAS results. Here's my contact information. If anyone is interested in getting in touch with me, please do. This is what I love to do.
It shows.
Maybe if you turn the lights on and see if School Committee members have any questions.
Yep.
Thanks, Mary.
Any questions?
Could you save a copy of the...
Yes, absolutely. Would love to, love to show you a copy of it.
Thank you, Julianne.
So I have, like, this, I don't know if this is as more of a School Committee, but it's, I guess it's a parent who had a 3rd grader who will be taking the MCAS this year.
Oh.
I mean, I am, well, it's no, she didn't take it last year, but, you know, there is, there's definitely more homework from 2nd grade to 3rd grade, which probably is normal, but I'm curious, how do, I don't know, I guess I'm concerned about kind of the anxiety around the test, or if there's focus around the test, and I guess I will understand as I go along, but, and I'm sure you do a great job at this, but how do we balance, like, the results and the need to have good data and improved scores, as well as, I mean, how do we balance that without, like, the, the weight of it on our students, on our learners?
Sure, yeah. So, so back to the theory of action quickly, if I may?
Yeah.
So I think that, that homework is a really important subject that we're talking about across the district right now, especially because of its impact on students who are living in poverty, or maybe are coping with trauma. It's actually, it's a, it's a nice thing that you bring up, because that is a conversation we're having. I think that the, so we often conflate standards with assessment, and I think one of the things that happened around the adoption of the Common Core and the new frameworks, was that we decided that somehow this, this testing data meant that our children were, you know, good or bad, like there was a, there was a, there was a negative connotation around the testing. I remember when I was a kid, I took the Iowa test.
Remember the Iowa?
No one ever told me that that was a reflection of me.
Right.
And so I think that we need to do better about being very focused on what the curriculum in the classroom is, and, and not raising the anxiety around the testing dates. And that's something that I think the administrators would agree with me on, yeah.
I was just going to add that, you know, certainly, I don't want to speak for Ms. April, but I know we do very similar things, so we often talk with the students in 3rd and 4th grade before they begin, and just remind them that all we're doing is getting information about how well the teachers are doing, and that we're looking at, you know, what's being taught and what we need to improve upon, and that it's nothing that they need to do. So just like any other day, we want them to just do their very best, which is what they do in their classroom, and I think it's, you know, the teachers are teaching curriculum, which is getting it for students to do well.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not that they're teaching to the test at all, but they're teaching to the teachers. But we do do a lot of work for the students, especially the new 3rd graders who are taking it for the first time, to just ease them and just remind them that it's not about that.
And I mean, it could even be like my own anx, you know, because there's a lot of talk about it, and, and even, but I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Because I do, I mean, I notice that there, like, even in, in my daughter, there's definitely, and maybe, I'm not even speaking clearly here, it feels like there's a little more anxiety on her part to get her homework done, which is, which is not necessarily a bad thing, but I just want to, as a parent, want to know how to support that, I guess. And I'm sure that there's other parents in the district that are probably curious about that question as well.
So I would say, as a parent also, obviously, if you have children there, focusing on the learning and not the task completion is the important piece. We want our students to achieve standards, but standards don't mean volume necessarily, they're reaching learning goals. And so I would say, especially around reading and math, it's not about how much you do, right? It's about making sure you do it as a habit. And so I think that that's a, that's a piece for parents, is to, you know, in whatever way you can, take the emphasis off the score or the testing day, and, you know, we read every night together, and when we're riding in the car, we notice patterns as we go down the street. And, and I throw a couple word problems in every once in a while on long car trips. They love me, my children, obviously.
It's all the candy.
So I think, I think really emphasizing what is the learning you're doing, and not what tasks are you finishing, or what score are you getting, is really important. And I would echo what Allison says, the testing data, for me, is about curriculum decisions, intervention decisions, certainly encouragement and support for teachers, right? It's not about student achievement necessarily.
That's great to hear.
Yeah, I think that that's a, that's a really important piece about data, and it's, it's sad to me that standards, which are really good, and assessment, which is sometimes very anxiety provoking, have come together in this way, because to me, they're very different. Standards are about achieving learning, assessment is about knowing where you are and what you need to do to help support everyone. So, I don't know if that helps, but...
No, and I appreciate the conversation too, because it's, it's important to know that while we, while we are doing well, and we do celebrate the results that we have, that it also is in balance of, you know, the families or the students, or people who are not, students who are not necessarily supported at home as well.
Exactly, and that's, yeah, and that's certainly the conversation we're having around homework.
Yeah.
It is, you know, for students who are from homes where a parent can sit down and do homework with them every night, we don't want to doubly disadvantage them. So that's a really important conversation we're having as a district at all levels right now.
That's why that's a great theory of action. It's really good.
Thank you.
Another question?
I guess I would just comment that I, I'm glad to hear from you, and I would, I would love to have more conversations about this, because, you know, we know that our, our districts do face real consequences at the state level if we don't see good numbers, and then there's the reputational consequences. People do look at these as, as ways to know whether or not they want to move into a district or whatever it might be. You hear it so much louder because of your kids, like, I would never...
I so appreciate that they're here, though. And I appreciate it even more.
But then when I hear you talk about it, it, it reminds me that there are purposes to data, and that data is not a bad thing in itself, it's, it's how you're using it, how you're gaining it. But I hear from a lot of parents who understandably are concerned that this data-driven culture at, at the state level, how is that affecting sort of independent learning happening between teachers and students in the classroom? And so, you know, I'm, I guess I'm just, I, I'm interested in hearing more from you, how you see that balance.
Yeah.
And that's a big question, I don't have to get into tonight.
I'll just add one little thing about it, that the, when you, when you look deeply at the data and you look at the differences between, let's say, you know, the high schools at the 37th percentile and high schools that are, say, in the 70th percentile, it's, the data points are so small between those two, and so we have to have this spread across, you know, 100 points for the percentiles, but the difference between a school achieving a 37th percentile and a school achieving between, at the 72nd percentile is really quite small. And so, you know, once you, when you dig in at that granular level, I think that that's where you get some real understanding around how, how the data feels like, yes, it's a good place to put your energy into improving education for all of the students in the Commonwealth, but not judging ourselves too harshly on where we are necessarily along that spectrum. This is definitely a strong school district academically, in comparison to the rest of the Commonwealth. Another great thing you can do on district profiles, since you're interested, is look at, you can track East Hampton in comparison to other districts in the Commonwealth, any other district you want to look at next to it, and look at, you know, what are the demographic differences, what are the achievement differences, what are the size differences, personnel differences? You can look at everything. And so it's a good way to, if you, if you're steering a family towards East Hampton and they want to look at, well, how do we compare? There's a really good way to do that on the DESI district profiles.
Interesting.
I'm sure Julianne would be happy to do some more presentations for us.
Literally forever about this. Yeah, I will stop now.
To answer any of the questions. Any members might have... Any other questions for Julianne?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Always a pleasure.
For me too.
And so finally, I would just like to take this opportunity, since Julianne finishes her dance.
The interpretive dance portion of the report.
I'd like to take this opportunity to formally announce my retirement. I believe it's gone out in the press and gone out in my update, but I had planned to do this this evening, and so I wanted to talk with you about this. During my years in East Hampton schools, in East Hampton Public Schools, I've been a teacher for nine years, a literacy coordinator, and a Title I Director for six years, a Director of Curriculum and Grants Manager for four years, and this is my eighth year as Superintendent of Schools. My original intent was to retire at the end of my sixth year as a Superintendent, but I, when I learned that the building project I had submitted to the Massachusetts School Building Authority on behalf of the district had been invited into the capital pipeline, I knew I had to stay to do everything I could to support a project that could result in 21st century facilities for all students in East Hampton. The proposed project will go to the community for a vote in May, and so June seemed like the right time to retire, with the hope the community will have approved a new building project for our students and our community. I've been privileged and honored to have spent the majority of my career in education in East Hampton. When I was being interviewed for the position of Superintendent, I remember saying I believed that the East Hampton Public School District was a sometimes overlooked jewel of a public school district. I still believe that, and will continue to work this year, as I have in years past, to promote all that is good about our city, and the support we get from our mayor and city council, our district, and the support we get from our dedicated School Committee members, our excellent faculty, staff, and administrators, our caring and dedicated families, and most importantly, our students who excel in so many ways. Thank you to all of you who have supported me along the way, and thank you to all who will support the work we will do this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy.
I would like to thank you for your outstanding service to our district this past 26 years. We are very grateful. You provided strong leadership, and you continually improved student learning across the district. You've been successful in continually increasing student achievement and raising the bar for our district all along the way, and you've been the consummate professional in, in all communications, in all dealings, in all happenings in this district, at all times. And you've always been committed to excellence in everything you do, and we are truly, truly grateful for all that you have done, for the students and the families and the school district over all these years. Thank you so much.
And for me, Nancy, I have to tell you, it's been an extreme pleasure to be working side by side with you and collaborating over, over the many years together, but especially my four years as mayor. There's very few people that I admire in my life, and you know you're one of them. It's the character that you show. You know, when things are going good, anybody can be on top of their game, but the way you fur, the way you face diversity, the way you face issues, problems, is just so commendable and admirable. I truly think that you are the ultimate, ultimate professional, and I cannot tell you what a strong human being you are, and what an example you are to our community, and never failing, always being there, and no matter what decisions you have made, I know have always been the best for our community. And I am so grateful to have had these, these years with you, even though I'll be leaving before you. Yeah, it's been an extreme pleasure, and I, I can't tell you how grateful I am for all the time, the hours, the expertise, and the professionalism to our community, and you stand proud. Thank you.
And again, it's been an honor and a privilege to work with all of you. So thank you to all of you.
I, I just want to jump on that. I don't want to not tell you how much, in the last two years, I've really appreciated your professionalism, your approachability. I can, can't thank you enough. I know how many hours you've put in. If I call you and have a question or want to meet you that day, you find the time, no matter how busy you are, and I know your days are long. You've brought a lot of school of choice dollars back to the community, you've built our, our school programs. So many districts across the state are still losing teachers, and they're losing programs, and you have managed to work, work it so that we're really growing rather than diminishing. And I really have appreciated every time that we've worked together, and thank you.
Well, again, it's been a collaborative effort, so I couldn't have done it without your support, and I greatly appreciate that every day of my superintendentship.
And I, I mean, I, I echo all of the comments as well, and it's just been, it has been easy to help with you, and really, I'm, through the process and the hours that you put in, it's, you know, sometimes I'm like, I can't believe that you're still standing. There've been, there've been times when I'm like, wow, Nancy, I would, I would be like falling down and asleep, but you still are professional, and you're dedicated, and you're committed to the district, and really, the result has, has come from, you know...
And really, the result has come from, you know, taking the schools from the levels they were at to all of them, except one being level one. And the school building project as well. I mean, for you to stay on, to see it through, I just wanna thank you for that. And I, you won't be disappointed because it will be passed. And I'm, you know, willing to work, even if I'm not, I mean, I won't be on school committee, but I will be working to get that project passed and also supporting the progress of our school district moving forward. So I appreciate all of the work that you have done. Yes, thank you.
It's also important to note that Nancy oversaw the high school building project from the point that it was approved and construction started and oversaw that whole process and made that the great facility that it is for us today. And has done all this preliminary work in securing us a position in MSBA's lineup for funding for our new pre-K through eight. So just covered the spectrum.
And we keep our fingers crossed.
Yeah. Okay, we'll now move on to matters for action, and we have warrants and payroll.
Okay. I move to approve the school payroll dated October twenty-six, two thousand seventeen in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars, twenty-one cents.
Second.
There's a motion that's been seconded to approve the school payroll dated October twenty-six, two thousand seventeen in the amount of four hundred ninety-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-nine dollars and twenty-one cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October twenty-six, two thousand seventeen in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars, sixty-seven cents.
Second.
There's a motion to approve, it's been seconded, the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October twenty-six, two thousand seventeen, in the amount of three hundred and twenty-three thousand, five hundred and forty-three dollars and sixty-seven cents. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And then I move to accept the school committee meeting minutes for the meeting on October tenth, two thousand seventeen.
Second.
There's a motion to approve the school committee meeting minutes for October tenth, two thousand seventeen. It's been seconded. All those in favor?
I'll abstain, I wasn't there.
Motion passes, one abstention.
And then there is a request for a school of choice slot for the eleventh grade. This is a current EHS student moving out of district and would like to remain at EHS.
Second. We have a motion to approve the school choice slot for East Hampton High School for grade eleven, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And then there is an out-of-state field trip request. This is for, to go to High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut for a senior outing.
Second.
There's a motion, it's been seconded, to approve the out-of-state field trip request on May twenty-ninth, two thousand eighteen, for East Hampton High School seniors to attend a senior outing at High Meadows in Granby, Connecticut. All those in favor? Motion passes.
And then the last one is a Bobcat resolution.
I can't wait to find out what the Bobcat resolution is. I keep looking at the resolution, I don't know where the Bobcat expression is. It's Director of Bus Services, but.
We're gonna protect Bobcats from property observer schools.
So it says, "In connection with the municipal lease agreement dated and effective as of October tenth between Bobcat of Connecticut Incorporated, which together with any successor or signee is referred to as leaser, and City of East Hampton, East Hampton Public Schools, a political subdivision organized and existing under the constitutional laws of the state of Massachusetts." I still need you to explain what this is.
Are we leasing a Bobcat?
Yes.
So we're leasing the Bobcat.
Leasing a Bobcat or a Bobcat, kind of Bobcat machine.
Thank you.
Not a noun. And the lease requires that you, as school committee, approve this.
Why are we leasing a Bobcat?
Because it's more cost-effective than buying this piece of equipment. This piece of equipment will be used to mow the football field because it protects the football field. We don't have equipment now that will do that easily. And it does some other wonderful things, too, that I don't remember at this point in time.
This is what we had talked about before.
Yes, yes.
So I can phrase it now, thank you.
I think because it said resolution. If it said lease agreement or something, it would have been.
It's lease agreement, fine, Grand Bay.
Yeah, thank you.
So how about if I just say, I move to have us approve the lease agreement cat.
Second.
We have a motion to approve the lease agreement with Bobcat preparation, and it's been seconded. Any questions, colors, discussion, any further comments? All those in favor? Motion passes. Thank you.
I'll make, do you want me to make, I'll make a motion to adjourn?
Move into.
Or do you have something else?
Do a adjourn, correct, Sue?
Yes.
Do a adjourn.
Or move into a work session. Either way. Okay, do we have a motion to move into a work session?
Motion to move into a work session?
Second. We have a motion to move into a work session, it's been seconded. All those in favor? Thank you very much. So we'll be, this school committee will be meeting in.